Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. It is 7:01. I am calling the meeting of the Altadena Town Council, November 21st, to order. The first call to order is our flag salute. Our flag salute is going to be led by Howard Smith. Howard, can you go up to the podium? Tonight, we are recognizing veterans. A veteran is someone who, at one point in their life, wrote a blank check made payable to the United States of America for an amount up to and including their life. Howard Smith volunteered for the United States Air Force and was stationed at the Strategic Air Command's Beal Air Force Base, where he worked in the Controller Division. He continued his education with the Community College of the Air Force and received an honorable discharge. He later earned his Bachelor of Science degree in Business Management, and he graduated as Sumlam Summa? Sumakuma. Okay, he graduated with honors. I feel privileged to have Howard as my friend. Howard, you wanna lead us in the flag salute? Okay. Reggie? Reggie? Do you have something for Howard? Yeah, okay, that's from us, Howard, to you. You're welcome. Thank you, Reggie. Everybody is in holiday mode, so, okay. So we move right along to our 1.2 roll call. Councilmember Wong.
Thank you, Chair Jones. Let's get our roll call rolling. Reginald Wilkins. Thank you. Councilmember Doug Colifar. Thank you. Councilmember Connor Sapola. Councilmember Victoria Knapp.
Excused.
Councilmember Alan Peck. Councilmember Pat Sutherland.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Diane Marcusson. Councilmember Sylvia Vega.
Excused.
Thank you. Councilmember Melissa Marona. Thank you. Councilmember Dorothy Wong is here. Councilmember Veronica Jones. And Councilmember Rod Bryce.
Excused.
Councilmember Nick Aronson.
Here.
Councilmember Billy Malone.
Excused.
Councilmember Chris O'Malley.
And excused.
Who am I missing?
You did it.
I think that's it. Yes, my computer's over there, excuse me. So we have nine present, we have a quorum. Ten present? Sorry, I heard yes. Ten, we have a quorum. Thank you all.
Okay, we move right along to 1.3, approve tonight's agenda. Vice Chair Victoria Knapp is not here, so we have Councilmember Aronson.
Good evening, fellow council members and community members, both here and watching online. There are agendas at the back of the room, as well as public comment cards. The council welcomes input from the community on both agendized and non-agendized items. If you would like to make a public comment, please fill out the card in the back on the table and give it to a council person on either end of these tables. And while the council does not respond to public comment during the meeting, if you would like a response, please do include your contact information. This process is in place to ensure that everyone wishing to make public comment has the time to do so and that we can conduct this meeting in an orderly fashion. Councilmembers, the Altadena Town Council Executive Committee met on Tuesday, November 14th, to set the agenda for tonight's meeting. The agenda was circulated to you on Saturday, November 18th. I received no corrections, requests, or changes, but I do have a couple tonight. There will be a vice chair report I have to read in behalf of Chair Knapp, and that will become 2.2, moving subsequently all the others down to three, four, and five. Chair Jones, I believe you have a correction, or...
I'd like to move action item number 5.1.3 up under, to be the first item under land use.
And Committee Chair Marcusson, that's fine?
Is that okay with you, Diane? It'll be over faster than the other two.
Okay. Any others? Seeing none, I move the agenda to be approved with set changes.
All those in favor? Okay, unanimously passed, okay. So we move on to our chairman's report. My report is very short. I wanna thank everybody for contributing to the pies for Union Station. They were very happy to get them, and there were a lot of pies that we were able to distribute. So thank you, everybody, for doing that, and I wanna wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you, and don't forget, next month is our holiday party. Okay, all right, that's my report, thank you.
Speaking of a holiday party, Chair, if I may?
Go ahead.
The vice chair report mentions the 2023 Community Holiday Party, an annual tradition here, council members and Altadena community. We will be hosting our Community Holiday Party again immediately following our December 19th council meeting. There are flyers in the back on the table, and they can be found on our website as well. We welcome the community to come out and celebrate with us. Councilmembers, Victoria, we'll be sending out a sign up and will forward you that flyer for the event to you, to have you share with your constituents. Also, November is National American Heritage Month, intended to celebrate and recognize the accomplishments of the peoples who were the original inhabitants, explorers, and settlers of the United States. As we also celebrate Veterans Day this month, it's important to point out, Native Americans have eagerly and faithfully served a government which did not always keep its word to their ancestors. They have volunteered to serve in conflicts from World War II to Iraq to the current conflicts we face today. For Native American veterans, the honor of defending their country overrode all other considerations, and their loyalty and sacrifice is appreciated. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we move right along to 2.3, Recording Secretary's Report, Nick Aronson again.
You're gonna be sick of me. All right, this, on October 17th, the town council meeting minutes, the October 17th town council meeting minutes were sent out to all of you last week, council. I did make one minor correction to Captain Williams' title, thank you, Pat. Are there any additional changes requested? Seeing none, Chair Jones, I move that we accept the minutes as delivered with the one minor correction.
Is there a second? Okay, all those in favor? All those opposed? One abstention?
Got it.
Okay, two abstentions, two.
Okay.
Okay, all right, so we move along. We have, our treasurer is not here, he's already on holiday, so we won't have a treasurer's report, but we do have our can. Regardless of that, we have the can.
Hi, I'm Councilmember Nick Aronson. This can is an antique can, I'm guessing dates back to early 1980s. The town council depends on the kindness and donations of the community to do our hard volunteer work. If you feel like putting a dollar, some change, a $20 bill in, please do so.
Hundreds, whatever.
As witnessed by our chair, thank you. When it makes its way around, if you could please return it to Reggie, thank you.
Okay, okay, we move right along to 2.5, Corresponding Secretary, Councilmember Wong.
Thank you, Chair Jones. If you donate, maybe you get a cookie. Or two, yes.
They're the best cookies in Altadena.
Okay, so, thank you very much. We always have an exciting time, lots going on here, so you'll be hearing about that, I feel like I say that every, every week, and I'm looking at my list here. So, we're already, already at the 21st. Following Thanksgiving, we have some events to mark in your calendar. 11:29 is the Akona Meeting. At the Akona Meeting, there will be, Captain Jabari Williams will be speaking on some issues, such as 24-hour fitness...
Security.
Security, and a variety of issues, best way to report issues for long and short-term rentals, traffic safety, LA County Public Works. We'll be talking about a variety of traffic safety measures, and we'll report on all that. You can find out the rest at akonaonline.org. And then, 11:30, in no particular order, at 11:00 AM at the library, will be a community meeting regarding sidewalk vending at 11:00 AM, so that's 11:30. Also, mark your date, January 23rd, 2024, is the Greater LA Homeless Count for Altadena. Espa 3, which is the San Gabriel Valley, will be the launching, the first day of the homeless count for Los Angeles County. So you can sign up to volunteer at They Count Will You, and we'll have that on the website. Oh, also, on... I have it right here, we have our Clean LA, December 2nd, mark your calendars. For the in-person session, LA County Public Works will provide trash collection services and wanna hear what the community has to say. So that is December 2nd, 10 to 11:00 AM at the Altadena Community Center. That's all for now.
So right here, okay, all right, thank you for that. Okay, now we move on to Public Safety Report. Can we have our Altadena Sheriff's Station, Captain Jabari Williams?
Good evening. So I'll just start off with a few stats. Our aggravated assaults were down, and I give up-to-date stats up until about last week. Our aggravated assaults are down actually 6%. However, we did have three shootings within this time period. Two of them, they were intended victims, and one, someone just discharged a weapon within their house. That person's in custody as we speak now. The other two, one happened on 200 Block of Calaveras, where we had possible road rage incident, we're not sure, but it's still being investigated by our gang unit. And then the other one happened, the other shooting, it was last week, where there was a shooting at the parking lot of the McDonald's, right there on Lincoln and Woodbury. Someone was hit, struck in the shoulder and leg, and they are in stable condition. Both of those shootings are being investigated, like I said, by the gang unit assigned to Altadena. Property crimes are up 2%. Our robberies did increase, there were robberies that were conducted without a weapon being used, however, they did go up, so we're going to do more enforcement and try to pinpoint strategies to deal with the increase in robberies. Burglaries, residential burglaries are down 24%, that's very good. Our vehicle thefts are down 4%, however, in the month of October, we were hit very hard with vehicle thefts, mainly in the Eaton Canyon Trail area and up in Cheney Trail. However, they were sporadic throughout Altadena, all over, where we did get hit pretty hard with vehicle thefts. And that's, I'm sorry, thefts from the vehicles. Our GTA's, Grand Theft Autos, were down 4%. We expected that number to be down more, but in the month of October, we were hit pretty hard with vehicle grand thefts. We believe it's a trend going on on TikTok where people are targeting Hondas and Kias, and they're actually posting it on, on TikTok and YouTube. So just beware for the public, just to protect those, those vehicles as best you can. They're usually parked on the street, not in the driveways or in the garages. And then, of course, our petty thefts continue to be a problem, they are up 50%, and it's mainly people stealing things out of yards, and we had an increase in thefts of landscaping equipment. So we're telling all the people that are doing landscaping, or if you have people doing landscaping for you, it's best to not have that equipment out in plain view. Sometimes they'll leave it out, and they'll go in the backyard to complete some work, they'll come back and notice that equipment is being, that was stolen from them. Try to park it in the driveway, cover it up, things like that. We are trying to get an etching machine dedicated to Altadena, to where we can serialize property at, at a moment's notice. That kinda helps with, when it comes to recovering some of those stolen items. Things to watch out for around this time, package theft, just be aware that that's on the rise around this time normally, and then just safe driving. There are a lot of parties that are going on, and people are drinking and driving crazy, so just defensive driving is the best way. You can protect yourself, just take those extra minutes to, to look before crossing an intersection, and also slow your speeds. Two events I wanna talk about that's coming up. First one is December 3rd, that's a Sunday, between 8:00 and 2:00. It's a catalytic etching event, it's gonna be at Pasadena Toyota, that's at 3600 Foothill. This event is free, like all the other ones, however, we're going to have a toy drive attached to it. It's not required that you bring a toy to get your catalytic converter etched, we're just asking people to bring an unwrapped toy if they can. It's just a combination, it's a pretty good event, or should be. We had one in January with just a catalytic converter etching, and it, it worked out very well, so we're expecting the same for this one, too. And then the last thing, we haven't had one in a while, we're gonna have a Citizens Academy. It's going to be at the station, it's going to start January 10th, but we're accepting applications all the way until December 20th. Altadena residents are gonna get priority until it feels, and if it doesn't feel, we'll open it up to anybody that, in the surrounding area that wants to attend. This should last for six weeks, and it's just a chance to get to know the ins and outs of the department, around the station. We have presentations and some interactive scenarios that people can go through. Should be a lot of fun, I've looked at the agenda and the overview, and a lot of good things planned for, for that first session. So we hope to have more of those events, depending on the turnout that we get for, for this first session. That's all I have to report on, here to answer any questions.
I have some questions for the captain. Okay, first, I wanna just thank your deputy, he, he actually... How do I say, hunted me down? I didn't wanna use that word, but I couldn't come up with another one.
He tactically found you.
He, he tactically found me, it's raining on Saturday, to make sure a family in my census tract had a Thanksgiving dinner. I had promised him the information, and I dropped the ball, but he found me and got the information, so I wanted to thank him for doing that. That, the woman was so happy that she walked to my house today and left a white envelope to give to him.
What day was this?
Saturday.
I know who, what deputy that was, Deputy Valian.
Yep, thank you, thank you so much for doing that. So we have one less family without food this Thanksgiving in my census tract. Okay, then I wanted to ask about Charles White Park. I sent you what someone wrote to the supervisor, did you, you saw that?
I did, yes.
The woman who's, and I talked to the supervisor's office about it, but we really need to have some Sunday patrol there, it's really out of hand there, and I got an email tonight to ask you to please coordinate with the Parks Patrol. I don't know what they're called, but they patrol, deputies, okay, that on Sunday, that they at least stop by Charles White Park.
Yeah, we're gonna try to, we're gonna put it out to Parks Bureau also, but we're close by, we're gonna try to do those patrols also.
Yeah.
I did ask for specific times, was I given that, that times?
I don't think you were.
Because we can do random patrols, but if they pinpoint specific times, it makes it easier, but we'll, we'll do those patrols.
Okay, and I think random is good, because they start at 8:00 in the morning with the soccer games, and they go well into 5:00. So it's an all-day thing, so, but I appreciate that.
Sure, no problem.
Okay, all right, and then, okay, then we have...
Hello, Captain, the shooting at McDonald's, the road, possible road rage, or not the McDonald's, possible road rage, was there injury or death?
No, no injury or death, the person was not yet.
And is there an age?
200 Block of Calaveras.
Thank you. Is there an age for the Citizens Academy, an age minimum?
Oh, yes, very good question, so you had to be over the age of 18, sorry. And if you are interested, the person to reach is Deputy Valian, you could call the station, 626-798-1131, and ask for Deputy Valian for, for an application.
Great, and lastly, you know, continuing to keep an ear out for any word on the Charles Towns investigation that's in DOJ's hands, I assume you'll let us know.
Yeah, I will, I have no word on that yet.
Thank you.
One last question, in our census tract, Melissa and I, we have somebody that likes to shoot off literally dynamite sticks, that's basically shaking up, and, and so they, they're concerned, so generally speaking, what happens is, if you don't see it, then you can't do anything, and so they feel helpless, and maybe that's something we can talk about later, but it's definitely consistent.
I just wanna make sure they are reporting it.
They reported the last incident, and others are just scared of what might happen.
Okay, yes, please be on lockout, lookout, if you can give us a description of the person that makes it easiest, easier for us, they should not be having that explosive or firework on them. And if there's a certain time of day that they do it, that kinda helps, maybe we can be proactive and catch them before they actually set it off.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Doug, I think you have something.
Okay. It's too small for dynamite, isn't it?
It is, it is.
Captain, in appreciation for your two years of wonderful service to our community, please accept this small, this is the Altadena Town Council version of a two-year pin.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, guys, I really appreciate this. I appreciate the support from the town council and the community, and I look forward to more support, so stay on me, all right?
Yeah, we will. Put your hat on, I mean, let's see what it is. I can't keep a secret, I'm sorry, I can't keep a secret. Yeah, we want a picture. Doug, can you go up there and take?
All right, that's very nice, thank you. Hopefully the sheriff's not watching, because this is out of uniform. And it, and it's not fitting right now. All right, all right, all right. Okay, all right, thank you. No, get me in trouble. It is, it is.
Thank you for your service. Okay, we move right along to 3.2, our California Highway Patrol. Do we have Officer Keller, Bay, or Boyd?
Good evening, tonight you have Officer Keller. How are you guys doing tonight? Good evening, Officer Keller, out of the Altadena Highway Patrol Station. Tonight's traffic safety report for the month of October, we had a total of 29 traffic collisions investigated. Eight of those collisions had injuries, five of them were hit-and-run collisions. There was one driving under, under the influence investigation done. There was one vehicle versus pedestrian collision that we took, the pedestrian was in the crosswalk, and there were minor injuries in that, that collision. There was one vehicle versus bicyclists, I don't know if it's the one you're inquiring about, Dorothy? I'll, I'll get with you after, on that one. And then we had one vehicle versus an animal. We are continuing to patrol the school zones, myself, Officer Bay, and Officer Boyd. We are observing multiple cell phone, seatbelt, and U-turn violations, so be aware, pay attention to the signs. Another big one is double parking, and just stopping in the middle of the street to let your children out of the car to go to school. Please pull to the curb, find a safe location to have them exit the vehicle. The stop sign at Altadena and Halston, has anyone noticed that one yet? I think it's, it's, it's doing its job and slowing down traffic through that area. There are a few drivers that fail to stop, and action was taken for those drivers, as well as conversation and education. So be aware, that stop sign, it's new, but we are out there enforcing that location. We are receiving multiple complaints from citizens, usually around where they live, for vehicle speeding, suspicious activity, and those emails that I'm receiving, we are going out into that location, and some of the cases, we are able to find those specific vehicles that you guys are reporting to us. So please, keep sending me those emails, and we will be out there to make it all safe for you guys. Nightfall's coming a lot earlier these days, please do a walk around your car, make sure all your lights are functioning properly, and if they're not, please replace them so that you can see and be seen. Any questions?
Pat?
While I don't need the information at the meeting tonight, Officer Keller, I wonder, were you able to get the information on the accident at New York and El Molino about a week and a half ago?
I believe Officer Bay responded to that one.
You know, I, I, I'm looking for some information on it, and I'm, you know, since I've emailed to you, that's why I thought I'd ask you, had you, you know, perhaps you could just get back to me?
Yeah, I'll get back to you on that one.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Reggie.
I think you mentioned the one, well, did you, the Pepper and Newark was on the 16th Thursday, is that the one you mentioned, the pedestrian versus car in the crosswalk?
I believe so, the date, I'm not...
It was a, you see, minor injury? So there was no, like, alcohol or anything involved, just, just the pedestrian in a...
Correct.
Poorly lit environment?
All the collisions happened during the hours of daylight, and that was one of the things I did look at, that we investigated. There may be other collisions in the area that are not our handle.
Thanks.
Hi. So I did, I wrote down speed, that, that's a large number, 29. Usually it's like in the lower twenties, and we do have a consistent theme of vulnerable road users and DUI. But I did just wanna mention, you know, there was also some concern that bicyclists are running the stop signs, but at the same time, you know, there's a lot of, the Bicycle Master Plan, by the way, is gonna be updated and potentially find some implementation to separate cars from bikes, people walking, so that we don't have to... cars from bikes, uh, people walking, so that we don't have to continue to call out these numbers. And I just wanna say that this meeting is one year since we lost two of our pedestrians. And then, based on what Reggie just said, and then there was a woman, I understand, that was struck at New York and Mar Vista. And they do seem to happen during the morning rush hour or the evening, afternoon, dark time. So we're still sort of following that trend. So it's definitely very concerning. Uh, but I went to the Office of Traffic Safety, uh, Summit last week and I've been doing, um, a lot of learning too and um, a couple of months ago, um, the California, because it's a forty percent increase um, in pedestrian deaths, as I understand it, over forty years. So it is a, some cities are really proclaiming this traffic, um, emergencies just to really get things moving quickly. So Carlsbad won an award, but I did wanna say there's a campaign um, that maybe we can do in Altadena, uh, it's called Go Safely California. And Carlsbad actually used that, uh, framework as well as the new Safe Systems Approach, uh, which is shared responsibility to traffic safety. So I just wanted to say that out loud, as we remember, again, uh, this past Sunday was World Day of Remembrance, where people uh, honor and recognize our neighbors who are lost, so we don't forget their names. And so that's just, I think, um, you know, however, we can keep working together, uh, e-bikes obviously was a big, uh, big topic in the room and, um, you know, Highway Patrol is our uh, traffic safety and we're really lucky to have you guys, uh, working in our community. So I think that could be something that would be really useful too, is an all-encompassing, uh, safety campaign. So bicyclists, pedestrians can be seen and, uh, we're all just working together towards traffic safety. That's all.
Thank you.
Alright.
Is that it?
Unless you wanted to respond.
Okay, we have, um, did you have a response or did you have something?
I was just gonna throw out there, bicyclists, if you are riding your bikes on the streets, you are responsible to obey all the roadway rules, just like you were a car. All stop signs, stoplights, merges. You're same as a vehicle.
Okay. Okay, I think Diane, she has something for you and I think you need, yeah. Okay, go ahead Diane.
Um, okay, we were notified that, um, Captain Walton was retiring. So we're giving a certificate to him saying for your twenty-six and a half years of public service for being an integral part of our Altadena C H P area office and the California Highway Patrol Department and for keeping Altadena's roadways safe. And that's from Altadena Town Council for, yeah, if you would take it. And then somebody else retiring, Lieutenant Samuel Jones. Um, I'm sorry?
Shamil.
Oh, Shamil, oh gosh, you're right, Shamil, my apologies. For your twenty-seven years of public service and for your work on the Highway Patrol, um, in making Altadena's roadways safe for the community also from the Town Council. So if you'll give them those and thank them for their, here, I'm gonna shake it up. Thank you, thank. Of me?
Not a hat.
I'm not, I'm not, um, well, it's not me, it's you.
It's gonna be both of us.
Let's hold one of them, we'll, we'll open one of them, make it look, oh, okay. We're coordinated now.
It's not over yet.
That was Officer Bay.
Yep.
Officer Bay.
Can you deliver that, then, too?
I sure will.
Alright.
This is Officer Bay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're very generous tonight.
Just tonight.
Just tonight, only tonight. Okay, can we have, um, LA County Fire, is Maria Grekin? Yes, there she is.
Good evening. Uh, for the month of October, uh, responses in Altadena, a total of three hundred and eighty-five. Uh, three hundred and sixteen were for medical calls and, uh, two hundred and fifty-four, um, patients were transported from that. Uh, we had seven fires during the month. Um, the most significant would have been the, uh, structure fire on Palm Street on October twentieth. It was a faulty air fryer. Um, the residents were not home, they were not using it at the time, so it was just faulty. And, um, they, luckily, it was called in quickly and they did, they were able to confine the fire to the kitchen. So it did a total of twenty thousand dollars worth of damage. Uh, we had two vehicle fires, um, we had a trash fire, a cooking fire, and then on Woodbury Road, we had a fire on a, on somebody's patio that involved, um, an electrical malfunction, which could have been in relation to the storm. But it created an electrical malfunction in their patio lighting. And then on the twenty-ninth, on Gaywood Drive and Porter Avenue, we had a, a power pole fire. Um, we had a total of, we responded to a total of fourteen traffic collisions. Um, one of them was listed as versus pedestrian, looking that one up, that was versus the bicyclist, so I think that's the same one that Officer Keller was talking about. Uh, and on the fifteenth, on Lincoln Avenue, um, we had one listed as traffic collision into structure. So those always intrigue me. Um, looking that one up, it wasn't actually into a structure, it was a gentleman who had a, um, medical emergency in the parking lot of a market and he drove into a, a fruit stand that was outside the market. So, close enough to the structure, I guess, to, for them to classify it that way. Um, our safety tip of the month is, um, Thanksgiving, just a couple of days away, I'm sure everybody's preparing for that. Uh, and we just want you to be very, very safe when you're doing your Thanksgiving cooking. Thanksgiving is the leading day of the year for home fires involving cooking equipment. So please stay in the kitchen when you are cooking on the stove top and stay in your home while your turkey is cooking in the oven. Uh, if you choose to deep fry your turkey, make sure it is completely thawed before you start and cook it outside away from anything that can burn, including vehicles. And always keep a fire extinguisher handy. That is it, unless there are any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Okay, Melissa.
The vehicle, I mean, the home fire, which was, um, in a garage, I believe, it was either November second or November third on Aurelia.
I don't have anything about November.
Okay, my neighbors are just asking about it. Thank you.
Anything else?
I owe you a PowerPoint presentation. When I saw you, I thought, I never sent it. I apologize. I will send it to you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you and happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Okay. We'll see you at the holiday party. Okay. Okay, we move right along to our community reports. We have, uh, four point one Parks and Rec. Guillermo Portiel.
Hey, everybody. Um, just to give you a quick recap of last month, um, we actually celebrated our trick-or-treat village for any of you that came out. We had a good couple hundred people come out. We had candy, arts and crafts with the kids, it was a safe Halloween. Um, we also had Dia de los Muertos, which was about a couple of days after. Um, we had photo printing, food tasting, we had arts and crafts with the kids, we even had a mariachi band playing there. Um, and then we actually recently just had our Harvest Festival last week on Friday, so we had, uh, Margarita Luna, who actually is pretty interesting because she speaks about seven languages. Um, she was singing both in Spanish, she's part Japanese. Um, so she's really cultural. Um, and then also we had our Farnsworth Park Harvest Festival, so that one actually took place the day before on Thursday. And they also had Flamenco Souls, they had Drew, um, Tetrick, he actually played with the Philharmonic, so it was a really good violin, uh, performance from him. Um, and then just to kinda give you guys a good update of what we're actually gonna be having is, uh, next week on Wednesday, we're gonna be having our Everybody Play Science Night, so it's just an extra special after-school, uh, activity, we wanna, uh, invoke a little bit more with STEM activities. Um, so if anybody's interested, it's on the twenty-ninth, from two thirty to five thirty, uh, for after-school program. Um, and then the big event that I wanna announce is we're gonna be having our Winter Pad Event, so it's gonna be really big. How annually, we have snow, we have our sled area for the kids, we're gonna have photos with Santa, we're gonna be giving away toys. We're gonna have a bunch of giveaways for everybody, we're gonna be giving out Nintendo Switch, karaoke machine, Nott's tickets, um, some AirPods, so we're gonna be doing a huge event, we're anticipating a close to around fifteen hundred to two thousand people. So we're making sure we have everything for everybody, so if you guys know anybody, please make sure to share, I put flyers in the back. Um, in addition, I am gonna send out a huge email blast to everyone, I like to send it about two weeks before, so you guys don't forget. So it's gonna be next week, um, uh, December second, from four PM to eight PM. Okay? And then, um, last thing, in case you aren't able to make it to our Winter Pad, we have a smaller version of that, uh, event at Farnsworth Park, which actually is gonna take place on December sixteenth, from twelve PM to three PM, where we are gonna have toy giveaways, arts and crafts, photos with Santa, and then snacks and refreshments for everybody. Okay? Um, and I just wanna give a huge thank you to, uh, Nikki, uh, we appreciate your team, they have been coming out to all of our events, uh, to, uh, literally everything that we have. Um, and everyone, uh, shows out and they have fun with their activities.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Yeah, they're good. Yeah, thank you. I have something for you though. I wanna ask, are the, um, do you have to have permits to play soccer at Charles White Park?
Yes. Um, so for any organized group, I believe it's over fifteen people, you do have to have a permit.
But do we know if they have permits?
Yes.
So someone's there checking their permit?
Regularly every Sunday, it's the, the soccer.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Okay, thank you. Alright, look forward to the snow day. Okay, thank you. Okay, we move right along here to the library, we have Nikki Winslow.
Alright, good evening. Nice to see everyone. Happy Native American Heritage and Culture Month. Alright, so, as usual, we have some predictable closures this week. The library will be closed Thursday and Friday in recognition of Thanksgiving and the day after Thanksgiving, I guess you'd call it. Um, in addition to that, the main library will be closing at two PM on Saturday, December ninth, which is the C T L A lighting ceremony. Um, the parking lot will be closed all day, but library services will be available until two. So Board of Trustees, just today, that's the next slide, sorry. Um, we had to change the date, we didn't, we were not able to put together a quorum this coming Monday, so it's gonna actually be Tuesday, November twenty-eighth, at five PM. Um, they, those are held in person at the main library, so you're welcome to attend, as well as watch on YouTube on our channel, they're always live streaming. Um, the agenda package for that should be published tomorrow, if you're curious to see what business will be discussed. So the next two slides I'm really excited about because we've had some recent innovations and services that we've released and I haven't really highlighted too much of them since I've been here. Uh, last month I did mention that we were gonna launch our two library materials vending machines, which we did. Uh, thank you to all of the council members that showed up, uh, when we launched at Prime Pizza on October twentieth, I believe it was. Uh, we also have one at the main library, next to the sliding glass doors on the east side of the building. We're still looking for a permanent home for that, hoping to find something on the west side. If you have any ideas, please reach out to me as we're still, um, trying to find a, a permanent home for that, but both machines are fully functioning, I highly encourage you to access them twenty-four seven. Uh, we also, on November first, launched, absolutely, I'm on that previous slide, sorry. Homebound Delivery Services for eligible residents. So if you know people that, um, need their library materials delivered to their house, please have them reach out to one of our two libraries to get signed up. There's also, um, a webpage that was created that they can sign up online. So that's altadinalibrary.org slash homebound. And earlier this summer, we did a soft launch of something that's called Self-Service Extended Access. What that means is you can visit the main library, if you sign up, you get a, a little training and we make your card accessible, that you can come into the library from eight to ten AM. We're not staffed, but people can come in, use computers, check out materials, and have access to the library before we open at ten o'clock. So more information if you access the website or give us a call. Um, I also love to highlight our Fab Lab at the main library. Over the past two years, we've really revamped all of the equipment, largely through, um, grants that our, uh, Altadena Library Foundation has got for us. So there's DIY, Makerspace, sewing machines, Cricket, like, they're, they have so much equipment, even sound mixing equipment in there. Um, I'd highly recommend you check it out, it's open Tuesdays and Saturdays, so to, um, tonight from five to eight and Saturdays from one to four. Um, lab members go through an orientation and sign up, um, and right now we have almost a hundred and twenty people, so highly recommend you check that out. We also have a very cool Library of Things collection that came to life during the pandemic, when we really wanted to be able to check out hotspots and laptops for the community that weren't able to come into the library. Now that collection has grown to be all kinds of things. We have telescopes, portable power banks, uh, metal detectors, games, ukuleles, like, you name it. So highly recommend you check that out, because the library is more than just books, obviously. And a couple, um, of those items are in the vending machines too, so that's a fun little surprise. And we also have our Read Local Shop Local program that we're always looking to expand. Right now, we have twelve participating businesses. If you know of any other small businesses that would like to sign up, please send them our way. And I know I'm going over my five minutes, so I'll try to hurry up. Uh, our building projects update, won't go into a lot of detail about the conditional use permit, I do have our architect and capital project manager that will be, um, presenting a little bit later with land use. I did wanna say thank you to Veronica and Chris and Diane and all of the council members that have given us guidance and support through this process. Uh, we're continuing to work on design documents for the main library. Um, the Facility Committee is hoping to schedule an informational town hall about those design documents sometime in early twenty twenty-four. And I did wanna say thank you to Guillermo, not you specifically, but LA County Parks and Rec, we've had some really productive meetings with them lately and I'm feeling really optimistic that we're gonna find an alternate site at one of our local parks when the main library closes. So more info to come, it's a little in its infancy, but feeling very optimistic. Um, so lots of amazing programs coming up, I'll just like really quickly highlight. We're bringing Upstream, not for Second Saturday, which we normally do, but the Friday night before, um, the Light, Christmas Tree Lay-in Lighting Festival on Friday, December eighth. As you know, they're very, very popular, so highly recommend that you sign up, because registration is required. And since it's December, it will be indoors. Second Saturday will return in January. Um, for those of you that need something for your kids twelve and under to do during the holiday break, highly recommend that you sign them up for the Winter Bingo Reading Challenge, that's gonna run from December first through January seventh. Um, if the kids finish all twenty-five activities, they can win a stuffed animal while supplies last, supplies last, and get entered into a grand prize raffle. So something good for kids to do during their break. As usual, we have another wonderful, wonderful art exhibition in the community room and actually throughout the main library. Um, it's the work of seven artists that can be enjoyed through December thirtieth. Thank you to our art curation team for, again, creating another amazing exhibition. Um, and again, lots of community programs coming up, um, next Tuesday night, we're gonna have Family Game Night Lotteria at the main library. Um, for those of you that have not learned CPR, highly recommend that you attend Saturday, December second, at ten thirty to learn hands-only CPR at the main library. And then we're continuing to have Open Mic Night, it's become a little bit more popular for local poets and artists and anyone that wants to go up to the open mic, that's gonna be taking place Monday, December fourth. Um, at the Bob Lucas Library on December sixth, there will be a Cookie and Mocktails Recipe Swap, super fun, at seven PM. Um, and then on Friday, December eighth, at the main library, a Succulent Plant Swap. And of course, as I mentioned, um, the C T L A Winter Festival and Liking Ceremony will be in our parking lot on Saturday, December ninth, that starts at three, I believe, like, the, the ceremony to kick off the lights will be around six o'clock. And I think that's probably enough. Uh, happy to answer any questions you might have. Too many programs. Visit our programming and events page on the website. Okay, happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thank you, and we'll see you in a few minutes. Okay. We're moving on to four point three, Chamber of Commerce, Judy Matthews.
As she makes her way up, I'll remind everybody present, if you'd like to submit public comment, the cards are in the back, please fill them out so that we can include you.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi.
Altadena Chamber of Commerce began the fourth quarter with excitement and anticipation of many upcoming events and celebrations to keep our community engaged and informed. We invite you to join Chamber Open Session as its board meeting for the public to attend for the first Tuesday of each month at ten AM. at ten A M., excluding legal holidays. Zoom access information may be found on the Chamber website at altadenachamber.org. Mark your calendars. The Chamber Holiday Sip and Shop, Saturday, December second, twelve noon to four P M. at Mariposa Junction. The Chamber kicks off the holiday, holidays with vendors, youth vendors, food trucks, art, live music, kid corner, carolers, drawings, and more. With free admission, Holiday Sip and Shop is a great opportunity for businesses to kick off holiday shopping and for shoppers to take advantage of great deals and promotions in a festive, family-friendly environment, and we hope to see you there. Altadena Chamber of Commerce will be celebrating its one hundred years of service in the community, in the community and local businesses within a centennial celebration. Friday, February the, the second, twenty twenty-four, at Altadena Town and Country Club. The event is a roaring twenties evening affair, and you do not wanna miss this event. Check Chamber's website for more information. For these and other events are available on, again, the Chamber website. As we know, November is a month that allows us to pause and take a moment to reflect on all we have to be thankful for. And I would like to wish each and every one of you and your families a very happy Thanksgiving and holiday season. That's it.
Thank you, and same to you. Thank you. Okay, um, we move right along, uh, to our committee reports. Okay, um, we move the library up, so the library is, I'm gonna turn it over to Diane. That's what I'm gonna do. Go on, Diane. That's it.
You, you, you can, if I could be a little official. Um, the land use committee met two weeks ago tonight, and we reviewed three projects. Uh, the, one of them was for the library, and the committee voted and is recommending approval without conditions. Um, but we'll have the, that's to the, to the town council to make a decision. I mean, we'll do the other ones afterward with this.
Yeah, Nikki. We're doing the library first. And I think most of us have seen the presentation at least once, maybe twice.
Maybe more.
Yeah, so I don't think we need the full presentation. Is that okay with everybody, or does someone need to see the full thing again?
No, I think you figured out what you needed to show, right?
We were asked to bring the slide that has the setbacks.
Right.
Um, and I'm gonna turn it over to Jennifer Pearson. She's our capital project manager and was, as well as Mark Schuman, who was at, um, the land use committee. I was in Nepal at the time, so.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. Um, I'm gonna probably let Mark take most of this, him being the architect, but, um, basically, what we're doing is we're expanding the library by about fifty percent of the square footage and, um, meeting all of the setback requirements with one exception, which is, uh, we're following the line of the existing building along Ventura, which is already over one of the setbacks, so this, that's what this slide is showing you. Mark, do you wanna add anything?
Yeah, we're really here to answer questions. As you've noted, you've seen this a number of times. Nothing has changed. Uh, with, I will say, the exception of the discovery that the building was built over a setback. If even that setback existed when the building was built. And it, it makes a lot of sense to follow that line for structural reasons, as well as just continuity in the architecture. And in most, um, all municipalities, if there's an existing, uh, if situation is this, uh, they usually let a continuation of a grandfathered, um, uh, I'm not, I don't wanna use the word violation, although I just said it, a grandfathered situation where you're over.
Non-conforming setback.
Non-conforming setback. Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, I have all the words up here. Sometimes they don't come out here. Um, and so we were following that, and, uh, that's exactly what this is. Again, nothing else has changed. In fact, that was there before in all the other times you've seen it.
Well, and can you explain how, how much of a variance it is?
Yeah, if, it's a little hard to see on this slide, but you'll see the dark, um, portion towards the top of the, a building there, this, the, um, uh, which is a portion of the, uh, there you go, thank you.
Oh, my gosh. The human, the human, the human pointer.
Yeah, so, um, it's, I think we figured it to be, uh, around twelve feet, maybe fifteen at the most because the existing porch is part of that addition that we're doing. Uh, so it's along that elevation, it's, it's really.
The variance is just one foot.
At the very top.
Right, the variance is just one foot. So. Right.
And it's about one foot.
Right.
That's one, one foot over.
Yeah.
And all ADA requirements are still met on the sidewalk there, obviously, right?
Yes, in fact, there's, uh, about eight feet of landscape. Um, it really changes nothing that's been there, so. Yeah, can you point to that? Because I, it moved last time I checked it, yeah.
Yeah. There you go.
That's where it landed, right there, okay. We originally had it a, another location over.
Okay, any other, any other questions from the council? Okay.
Thanks, thank you.
Do you have a motion?
This is from.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, we can, yeah. So I'm sorry, did we have any public comment on any cards for this?
No.
I do not.
Okay.
Uh, George, is yours concerning the Bob Lucas? George McGruder, was it, was your public comment concerning Bob Lucas?
No.
Okay, we'll take yours later.
Okay. Okay, given the community's support and lack of any substantial objections, I move that the Altadena Town Council recommend approval without conditions for project P R J two zero two two dash two dash zero zero two six zero eight dash five slash C U P R P P L two zero two two zero zero eight three one.
Second.
Any questions, any discussion? Okay, okay, so, um, you have a question, Alan?
No.
No, okay. So it's been moved and seconded. Can, I'm gonna take a vote. All those in favor? So it looks like it passes unanimously. Okay, thank you, Nikki. Thank you. Yay.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so now we're gonna move on to the, the second set of projects that we reviewed. Um, and I want to start this by saying that, um, this is regarding, uh, a project for a new, um, wine store and wine tasting bar. Uh, and the, uh, the information is on the, the address and everything is on the, um, agenda in the back if you're interested, but, uh, we, the land use committee, um, struggled with this one uh, because we, uh, Altadena, other than, um, grandfathered in bars and liquor stores, um, we have not had in my tenure here on town council anyone come in to put in a liquor store and a bar next to each other, or in any, in any case. So it, it's extremely important to us as the land use committee and the working committee that we discuss and talk about and think about how the project will impact the community and what we can do, um, to look at it fairly from both the applicant and the resident's side and perhaps come up with some conditions. We were unable to finalize those conditions at the meeting, so we're bringing it to the town council without having given any recommendation for approval or denial, but having gone through and made sure that everyone on the town council is aware of what we have, are, have submitted for recommended conditions. So now I'll hand it back over to you.
Okay, um, it's, uh, C U P R P P two zero two three zero zero two two seven zero two two three one one. That's the wine bar. This is two separate, um, C U Ps, and, um, we will take them, even though they're, it's the same owner. The first one we're talking about is the wine bar lo- located at two three one one North Lincoln Avenue. It's a wine and spirits store that will occupy a po- a portion. What is that now?
The store?
We're doing the bar.
Okay, it's a bar.
Is that right?
Yeah, it's a bar. We're calling it a bar.
Oh, okay, so we're calling it a bar. Don't call it a store.
Cause the store is next door.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's a wine and spirit bar.
Correct.
That will occupy a portion of an existing building situated on a commercially, commercially zoned property. The property is located along Lincoln Avenue, and it's in a thoroughfare for which this part of Altadena has businesses, their neighboring businesses. They are serving the community. The item was presented at land use on two separate occasions. It has been discussed and vetted with the town council and land use. We've come up with a set of conditions that we will be asking for. And, um, I, uh, vetted and, um, went out canvassed over two hundred homes with the help of Cinch, which is my neighborhood watch group, and we didn't find any, no negative feedback at all. Early in the process, I did receive two e- emails supporting the, this project, and I have those, and I'll be attaching those with the letter, uh, going to, uh, regional planning. After must, much discussion between the owners, land use, and the town council, we came up with a lot of conditions. There's the, like, thirty-three conditions. And I'll be reading those into the record. So, um, do we need any more discussion on this, or?
I do have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
I thought this was going to be a wine bar and not a wine and spirits bar.
Okay.
Yeah, so do I.
Okay, we have a question.
Certainly. I'm happy to answer any questions. Brett Engstrom here on behalf of the applicants.
Is, so are they serving just wine or wine and spirits?
So there are two separate projects on the same property within the same building.
We're doing the bar.
The bar. The bar is a full line of alcohol for onsite consumption at the bar. That is one half of the building. That is one of the applications.
Mm-hmm, that's what it said on the application I read.
The operation is a, uh, wine and spirit shop that is actually relocating from Pasadena, uh, further up the street.
Yeah, we're not doing that one yet. Let's keep them separate.
Wine tasting there.
We're keeping them separate.
Got it.
Gotta keep them separate.
You got it.
So go ahead.
Go ahead.
So what's the license type for the bar?
The bar is a type forty-eight.
Forty-eight.
Good, good question, and I'll, I'll keep them separate. We'll keep one discussion going.
Are there any more questions so far?
No, so.
Should I read the conditions now?
You can, and then we'll take public comment before, okay.
Okay, I'm gonna read these conditions.
And just so you all know, it's gonna take a while, but all of these are important to ensure that the, the wine bar and the, the community live in harmony, so.
Exactly, and what we worry about here, and Diane keeps us on point about, is it not just this business, it's the business that follows this business and the business that follows that business because the owners now may be community-minded and be just perfect for our community, but down the line, twenty years from now, what's going to be there? So when we do the conditions, we're thinking long range. Is that right, Diane?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, Connor?
So it's not a wine bar. It's a bar.
It's a bar.
It's a bar.
Okay.
And it's called, it's called Twenty-three Eleven, right? It's just Twenty-three Eleven.
Twenty-three Eleven, but it's called Twenty-three Eleven Wine Bar.
Wow.
No? That's not what it says on the.
Okay, we'll call it Twenty-three Eleven.
Okay, bar. Twenty-three Eleven Bar. Okay, here are the bar, the, here are proposed conditions. Number one, the sale of alcohol, alcoholic beverages shall be from nine A M. to one thirty A M. The following day, no alcohol shall be served at the site beyond one thirty A M. No alcohol may be consumed after two A M. Security shall ensure the patrons leave the bar and surrounding areas by two fifteen A M. Security cameras, this is three, security cameras shall be installed inside and outside facing the outdoor and surrounding areas. Video footage shall be retained for at least one month and shall be made available to law enforcement upon request. Four, a monitored security alarm shall be installed on the premises. Five, the permittee shall not advertise the sale of alcoholic beverages on the exterior of any structure on the subject property, including windows, walls, fences, or similar structures. Number six, all regu- regulations of the state of California prohibiting the sale of alcoholic beverages to minors shall be strictly enforced. Seven, the per- permittee shall post or otherwise provide telephone numbers of local law enforcement agencies and taxicab companies at or near the cashier or similar public service area. Such telephone numbers shall be visible by and available to the general public. Eight, there shall be no consumption of alcoholic beverages outside the designated areas of the subject property. The permittee shall instruct all designated employees who directly serve or are in the practice of selling alcoholic beverages regarding this restriction. Nine, the permittee shall develop and implement a designated, designated driver program, i.e. free soft drink or coffee to a designated driver of a group. The permittee shall submit the program to the director of planning for approval prior to the approval of the C U P. All employ- employees shall be trained on the program. A printed two-sided card explaining this program shall be placed on all tables, or a notice regarding the program shall be printed on the menu. Ten, all servers of alcoholic beverages must be at least eighteen years of age. Eleven, no dancing or dance floor is authorized in or outside the premises. Twelve, there shall be no music or other noise audible beyond the bar's premises. Thirteen, the business shall comply with all L A County Noise Ordinance provisions. Fourteen, the permittee may hold happy hour drink specials, specials or similar promotions from three P M. to seven P M. seven days a week. Fifteen, there shall be no display of alcoholic beverages from open-air refrigeration display cases. Any refrigerated display cases for alcoholic beverages must have a door. Sixteen, there shall be no sales of alcohol from an ice tub. Champagne buckets are exempt for outs- onsite consumption. Seventeen, the permittee and all managers and designated employees of the establishment who directly serve or are in the practice of selling alcoholic beverages self, shall participate in the LEED License Education on Alcohol and Drugs Program. All new designated employees shall be subject to attend. The license, licensee shall display a certificate or plaque in a publicly accessible area of this establishment, such as the lobby, indicated that they have participated in the program. Proof of completion of the facilities training program by employees, the licensee, and all managers shall be available upon request. Okay, I'm getting there, okay. Eighteen, the rear door exiting the building to the alley shall have an alarm, an alert system to notify staff of people exiting via the door. B, an alert to notify staff if the door is propped open. C, emergency exit signage. D, a camera recording the exterior and interior of the door that captures people exiting or entering. Nineteen, a website for the business is required and must have a page detailing the parking location for visitors. Twenty, a licensed security guard must be present during the hours of operation. The security guard shall walk the areas around the bar to ensure no loitering by patrons and remain, remind patrons to be respectful of. to be respectful of neighbors by following posted signs and keeping noise to a minimum. Twenty-one, signs shall be posted on the rear of the building and in the parking lot, reminding those in the area to be respectful of residents. Twenty-two, a phone number for surrounding residents or law enforcement to call for complaints during business hours shall be provided upon request and must be answered by an employee so that the issue can be addressed properly. Twenty-three, an email or other contact information for management must be listed on the website. Twenty-four, no live amplified music is allowed inside or outside the business. Pre-recorded or acoustic music is allowed inside the business but shall not be heard outside the business. Twenty-five, there shall be no lottery or tobacco sales. Twenty-six, there shall be no smoking signs posted in the alley and parking lot. Twenty-seven, there shall be no loitering signs posted in the alley and parking lot. Twenty-eight, the permittee shall provide adequate lighting to the satisfaction of the director above all entrances and exits to the premises. Twenty-nine, the permittee shall provide adequate lighting to the satisfaction of the director in all parking areas and walkways under the control of the permittee. Thirty, all parking lot and other exterior lighting shall be a color temperature of 3,000 K or lower and be hooded and be dark sky compliant and be directed away from neighboring residents to prevent direct illumination and glare. Thirty-one, all litter and trash shall be collected regularly from the premises and the adjacent right-of-way. Thirty-two, delivery shall be between 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM to mitigate noise issues. Thirty-three, no bottles are allowed to be trashed between 9:00 PM and 8:00 AM in exterior trash or recycling cans for noise reasons. That's, those are the conditions. Okay? Do we have any public comment here? Okay. We had just two emails. We didn't have any.
Was that from, was that?
Those were back in July. I received two emails from, it was to you and to me. You received them.
So we've already accounted for those?
Yeah.
No public comments?
No, no public comment.
Turn your mic off, please.
Your mic, Diane.
Sorry. Does anybody here have any questions? Any additional questions?
So just to clarify, Diane, what you're saying for it? Land Use is not recommending these conditions? It's being given to, what is the difference between?
Well, so the Land Use Committee was unable to finalize the conditions at the actual meeting. So we, so those conditions have been worked on over the last two weeks.
Understood.
And everybody agreed to those and then were sent out to you guys for review.
Right, including Land Use received a muscle.
Right, yeah.
They gave input on it.
I know.
Okay. Dorothy?
So I was not able to make that last meeting. But the only question or thoughts, again, maybe it's just something that gets written in for concern, is there will be now potentially more people walking at night, driving, moving around in that area. So dark sky is, and you know, there has to be some balance of pedestrian lighting, so to speak, that I would consider Crosby is a intersection. If you look, if you're crossing the street, where are people parking? There's gonna be more of that activity. I would just be concerned about at least considering pedestrian lighting around that area. And then in looking at moving the bus stop, that might be complicated with the palm trees.
The bus stop isn't in the same place. It's not there.
The bus stop's not moving.
Yeah, and there's a special, a button flashing thing at Crosby now.
At Crosby, okay. And then Alberta's the other, right? So that's all. So if that, if someone can hit a button there, that's good.
Yeah.
But again, it's, Lincoln and Woodbury is our highest collision corridor and up towards Figueroa. So with the, just maybe more of that, that's something to think about.
Okay.
Just visibility and access with fast-moving cars coming up and down Lincoln.
Okay. Any more comments? Are we ready for a vote?
Do you can make a motion?
Okay. I make a motion that we send this CUP to Regional Planning with the 33 conditions. I recommend approval. Okay, second. Was there a second? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, unanimous again. Hey, we need to keep those other guys away. They cause problems. We agree on everything tonight. I know, it's recorded, right?
Okay, so now we have the liquor store. Which says on here, wine store, but I'm thinking that's not accurate.
Maybe I could clarify. It's a wine and spirits store. It's a high-end store called Everson Royce, which is now located at Fair Oaks down in Pasadena, near Central Park. Their local residents, they want to move the store a little further up the street, closer to their home, 2311 Lincoln. It'll be the same high-end shop. High-end wine, high-end spirits, quality operation. It will be a type 21 license. Maybe the confusion came about, there's a little wine tasting area within the store, which operates under a 42. If you go to any high-end wine shop now, there's a little wine tasting area within the shop. They have that as well. So that operates under a type 42 license.
Okay, item, this is our CUP RPP 2023002119. Everson Ross Wine. Royce. Royce. Everson Royce. It says Royce. Okay, Everson Royce Wine Store located at 2311 North Lincoln Avenue. It's a wine and spirits store that will occupy a portion of an existing building situated in a commercially zoned property. The property is located along Lincoln Avenue and established thoroughfare for this part of Altadena. There are similar, well, there's businesses not similar to this one, but similar in that they're businesses on that street. This item was presented at Land Use on two occasions. It has been discussed and vetted with the Town Council and Land Use members. Again, it was not voted on in Land Use, but everybody got input over a period about a week. Daniel worked on it with Diane and Doug and myself. And so we came up with 27 conditions that we all agreed on and I'll be reading those into the record.
As did the applicant. I think it's important to know that we've worked with.
Yeah, we worked with Randy, and Randy gave up a few things to make us happy. Yeah, it was not easy. We were, I think we are much tougher than Pasadena. So, so there's been extensive outreach to the surrounding committee, I mean, community. There has not been any negative feedback. I did get a phone call Saturday about it and it was just, they were kind of shocked that it was going in and they wanted a little information about it. And, but that's the only thing that came anywhere near being negative. So early in the process, I received the same two emails again from the same two people. So after much discussion between the owners, Land Use, and Town Council, we came up with the conditions. So I'm going to read those conditions and then make a motion and then we'll have some discussion if there's any discussion. Is that okay? That's good? Okay. Okay, so number one, the sale of alcoholic beverages shall be from 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM daily. That doesn't mean that you have to sell it during that whole time, Randy. Okay? Okay, okay. A monitored security alarm shall be installed on the premises. The permittee shall not advertise the sale of alcoholic beverages on the exterior of any structure on the subject property, including windows, walls, fences, or similar structures. All regulations of the state of California prohibiting the sale of alcoholic beverages to minors shall be strictly enforced. The permittee shall post or otherwise provide telephone numbers of local law enforcement agencies and taxicab companies at or near the cashier or similar public service area. Such telephone numbers shall be visible by and available to the general public. Six, there shall be no consumption of alcoholic beverages outside the designated areas of the subject facility. The permittee shall instruct all designated employees who directly serve or are in the practice of selling alcoholic beverages regarding this restriction. Seven, there shall be no display of alcoholic beverages from open-air refrigeration display cases. Any refrigerated display case for alcoholic beverages must have a door. Eight, there shall be no display and no alcohol sales from an ice tub. Champagne buckets are exempt for onsite consumption.
Can't have onsite consumption at that location.
Yeah, you can. They have a little wine area.
The little wine.
There's another, right, he said it's another.
Wine tasting.
There's a wine tasting area. They have a different license for in there.
You okay with that? Okay. Okay, nine, the permittee and all managers and designated employees of the establishment who directly serve or are in the practice of selling alcoholic beverages shall participate in the LEED license education on alcoholic and drugs program. All new designated employees shall be required to attend. The licensee shall display a certificate or plaque in a publicly accessible area of the establishment, such as the lobby, indicated they have participated in the program. Proof of completion of the facilities training program by employees, the licensee and all managers shall be available upon request. The rear door, ten, the rear door exiting the building to the alley shall have an alert system to notify staff of people exiting via the door. B, an alert to notify staff if the door is propped open. C, emergency exit only signage. D, a camera recording the exterior and interior of the door that captures people exiting or entering. Condition 11, a website for the business is required and must have a page detailing the parking location for visitors. 12, no live amplified music is allowed inside or outside the building. Pre-recorded or acoustical music is allowed inside the business but shall not be heard outside the business. 13, all litter and trash shall be collected regularly from the premises and the adjacent right-of-way. 14, the permittee shall provide adequate lighting to the satisfaction of the director above all entrances and exits to the premises. 15, the permittee shall provide adequate lighting to the satisfaction of the director in the parking areas and walkways under the control of the permittee. 16, all parking lot and other exterior lighting shall be a color temperature of 3,000 K or lower and be hooded and be dark sky compliant and be directed away from neighboring residents to prevent direct illumination and glare. Condition 17, the permittee shall display alcoholic beverages only on the shelving designated for storage of said beverage as depicted on the shelf floor plan. No additional display of alcoholic beverages shall be provided elsewhere on the premises. 18, the permittee shall post signage prohibiting the consumption of alcoholic beverages on the exterior walls and parking lot areas. 19, there shall be no wine with the exception of wine coolers sold in containers of less than 375 milliliters. 20, no miniatures of any type may be sold. Wine cooler shall not be sold in less than four-pack quantities. 21, malt beverages, beer, else, scout, spout, scout, and malt liquors? Okay. Okay, shall not be sold in a bottle or container greater than 750 milliliters or 25.4 ounces. 22, the permittee shall install and maintain a closed-circuit video monitoring and recording system with cameras throughout the property, including a view of the alcoholic beverage display area, entrances, sides of the building, and parking lot areas. The video monitoring system shall be available onsite for regional planning staff to verify its functionality. Video footage shall be retained for at least one month and shall be made available to law enforcement upon request. 23, delivery shall be between 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM to mitigate noise issues. 24, no bottles are allowed to be trashed between 9:00 PM and 8:00 AM in exterior trash or recycling cans for noise reasons. 25, no noise or other, no music or other noise shall be audible beyond the store premises. 26, the business will comply with all LA County Noise Ordinance provisions. 27, there shall be no lottery or tobacco sales. Okay, any questions? Did everybody understand what I was reading? Go ahead.
So just want to clarify, what is the license type for the shop?
License type for the shop is a type 21, which is a full line of alcohol for onsite consumption.
Okay, right. I had heard 42, but that was for the.
And the 42 is the onsite tasting, which may or may not occur each day, but it's a special license aside for tasting some of the wines they have for sale.
And so the 42 is a section within there, and there's no distilled spirits in that area?
Correct. It's a section within the store and it's roped off and it's only wine available.
That answers my question, okay.
Right. I also did want to mention that we took these conditions mostly from the conditions that we put in place for Grocery Outlet and for Aldi. So they're pretty standard for Altadena and the new businesses that we've had come in to be selling liquor. I think it's important to note, it sounds like it's a very harsh sort of what we've been putting in here. But as you said, it's so that it will position us down the line. We're sure that you guys are gonna be great neighbors. But if you get really successful and need to get bigger or move or something, then we have to look at what the business is gonna be. I think this will be a really great way to have harmony between the neighbors and the business. So that's a good thing. Okay, so do you want to do a motion? I don't think anybody else has any.
I want to, okay, I'd like to move that the.
No, I just want to, again, even though it doesn't end up in the conditions, I'm still, you know, there's gonna be a lot more movement at night and throughout the day. And pedestrian, we are three times or four times higher collisions, injuries to people walking and biking than our neighbors. So we rival Pasadena right now. And so I'm hoping that we all just kind of think about that as your great business comes in and is part of the community, that we just really work on that mindfulness of how we all move around safely. And maybe that can lead to some projects that Public Works can do to also help with safety. That's all. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Dorothy, are you really trying to say that there should be more lighting there? You know, are you pointing towards something in particular or?
I think we don't really light for pedestrians very well. Lincoln does have more lighting, but we also have cars going pretty fast in both directions. So, you know, businesses can actually help. Not saying it's all on you, but as more things grow and we really start thinking about it. And I know Lincoln is perhaps earmarked as something, but pedestrian lighting, since we haven't implemented a pedestrian plan and we have lighting districts, it is something. um, it is something that we should really pay attention to, for sure, and if it's at the front and, you know.
Yeah, and that could be more of an overall plan. We've got.
Right, where the parking, the parking circulation, however we can think about that.
Okay, I think I'm ready for a motion. Okay, I'd like to move that the Altadena Town Council move this CUP forward with the conditions that I just read. I recommend. To the regional planning.
Second.
Okay, it, the motion has been seconded. Any questions? Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor? I told you, we all agree. Okay, thank you. Okay, so that, it's all taken care of. Uh, it's done.
And thank you for your patience as we worked all of this through.
I want to just uh personally thank um Diane, Doug, um, Daniel, the land use. I mean, because it, it really, um, they were very detailed and very step by step and did not want to push it through without making sure it was right. So thank you Diane for your leadership there. Okay? Okay, thank you guys. Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay, okay. Yeah, where am I? Okay, thank you. Okay, we're on five point two election. That's me. Okay, I. Again, okay, I, I'm not going to be able to talk tomorrow. Okay, um. This is my elect two, two thousand twenty-three election report. We had a suc- successful election. The elec- the election was a collaborative effort between many businesses, volunteers, and organizations. We all worked together to bring a, a successful election to our community. The election uh was compa- com- the election committee was comprised of the following individuals. Um, Bridget Brewster, Doug Cauliflower, Connor Chapola, Karen Gibson, Valerie Jones. Did I say your name wrong?
Connor.
Oh, what did I say? I always think of Connor because of the Connor, the hamburger place. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay, it's getting late. I'm sorry. But anyway, we had a great committee and I, I want to do a special thank you to Catalina. Sarah Doris at the Maine Library, she was very helpful and she stayed all day Saturday at the Bob Lucas Theater on her day off, so we really appreciate that. We had a total of thirteen candidates. The results were exceptional. The election was held on November third and November seven. We had three polling places. There was a total of four hundred and sixty votes. Councilmember Wong, she got the, the booby prize for getting seventy-five. No. No, she got the best, the most, and she was running unopposed, so that was amazing. So, um, we have three new council members that will be sworn in next um month, and we have five returning council members. Okay, also Melissa Morana is our slate chair. Melissa, can you give us a, a few words about the slate committee now?
Yes, thank you for asking me to chair that committee and um on the committee will be Doug Cauliflower and Billy Malone. Uh, for those uh that are currently seated council member minus the nominating committee, you will receive an email with application procedures on or around November twenty-ninth. So be on the lookout for that if you're interested for running for chair, vice chair, treasurer, recording secretary, or corresponding secretary. Thank you.
And thank you for doing that. Okay, I just want to express my sincere gratitude to everybody who contribute to make this election a success. Um, Diane for showing up to volunteer. It, it really helped. Um. Yeah, I got that part too. Okay, and also I, I want to thank my special superpower, which is my husband. He showed up um at the crack of dawn putting up pop-ups, so I wanted to say that on the record. So, and we received many positive com- uh compliments from the voters. Okay, in conclusion, I would like that this, I would like to move that this report be um accepted and certified. The results be certified. All those in favor? Okay, again, we agree. Thank you unanimously. Move on from the election to, let me get back to my. Oh, okay, so now we have communications.
All right, this will be just real brief. Um, thank you councilmembers Cauliflower and Sutherland for your notes and approval on the new survey, the digital survey. I'm just taking a moment to remind the rest of the council if you can get me any changes or suggestions for the new survey. If I don't hear from Friday, I'll just go ahead and start using the new survey. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, we have five point four Safe Streets Committee. Dorothy Wong.
Thank you Chair Jones. So just to highlight some meetings, again, the Safe Streets Committee meets monthly via Zoom. Uh, and uh a variety of topics are covered. Usually it just kind of goes with the flow of traffic, so to speak. Uh, so we, uh, we did talk about a walk audit on El Molino, uh, addressing uh safety concerns there. Um, also um, the Akona meeting on the twenty-ninth will be addressing traffic safety, as I talked about earlier. Uh, learning about different um, different projects and, and things like that. So join the meeting. Our next one is December twenty-first um at seven PM Thursday. Uh, did I say December? Yes. Uh, and then circling back, November thirtieth, this is actually really pivotable, pivotal, as I've mentioned several times, um, that the County of Los Angeles unincorporated area bicycle master plan is being updated for the first time as I understand it in the history of the bicycle plan. And at that point in time, about seven percent of the actual plan was implemented. And so twelve years have passed and we've been listening to, again, a lot of traffic stress in our community through everywhere, social media, um, and just, you know, it hurts when our, our neighbors uh die. So amazingly enough, um, the bicycle master plan is an amazing tool for our community uh to really think about our roadways. And I put a QR code at the back of the meeting here if anybody wants to look at that. There is a preliminary um layout of streets based on initial um feedback from a variety of community members that gave input. And a lot of um, even in, a lot of conversations also happening with our neighbors in Glendale uh and Pasadena. So the meeting on the thirtieth is going to be virtual. Uh, so you'll learn a little bit about the plan. We're in phase two right now, which is giving comments on the current uh plan, and there are definitely holes in the Altadena plan. And even when you think about what that plan means, it's a plan, so it really then has to grow into how it actually gets implemented over time. Again, in twelve years, only seven percent was implemented. And uh just by separating uh movement of how we travel around can significantly uh reduce some traffic deaths and collisions and as we're working towards safer streets, so. It's the one plan that's happening soon because it will actually get implemented. Um, and fall goes as planned in twenty twenty-five, and it's already almost twenty twenty-four, so before we know it. So this is a great opportunity on the thirtieth. I'll have that on the uh town council website. Uh, you can find that link uh to that meeting and you'll be able to give input. And we've also been doing some community bike audits and so if you want to join a bike ride, um, there's always some time for that. Uh, let's see. And I think that's mainly it. I, I talked earlier about the uh Go Safely campaign that I, that would be a really great tool for our community uh to really take shared responsibility for traffic safety. So um, we're going to learn more about that at our next meeting. Go safely, Altadena.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. We are grateful for our Safe Streets Committee. Okay, we're gonna skip five point five holiday party. We already heard about that, and we're going to move on to our general public comment.
All right, I have one comment cards. George, if you want to come on up to the podium, and are there any others? If so, please bring them up to me. George, you have two minutes and don't concern yourself. I will definitely let you know when you're running out. But um, welcome and go when you're ready.
Yes, my name is George Bagruder. I live over on Pentagon, West Pentagon uh and off of Thurin, which is, creates a double cul-de-sac. It's only one way in, one way out. Every morning, uh, you can't get out because the Averson parents have the street blocked. Uh, I, we, my neighbors, I've talked to them, we would like to have a red curb painted so cars cannot park there. It's going to be a bad accident. Somebody's going to be killed. Uh, several people in the block have discussed how they've almost been in accidents through there. Uh, they're also, we, um, do we have concerns because at, in the evenings, all these pop-up tents are popping up everywhere with these food places. And everybody's concerned because we know they can't be under the county health department's of, of approval. And also to, I'm trying to cut, get this all done quick, is we're, we're concerned about, when I first, when my family first moved to Altadena was in nineteen fifty-eight. My father had a construction company. One of his friends had a construction company also. They were not allowed to park their trucks or tractors on the street. On Fair Oaks Street, it looks like a, a truck stop. Over by John Muir High School, it looks like a truck stop. That's not beautiful Altadena, you know. Uh, that's about all I have to say right now because uh I gotta cut everything short, so.
You can have a half a more minute if you have a couple of things you can get really quick.
Well, as, as I was saying, the big trucks and we want, we want some type of stop sign on that Altadena Drive to stop for Thurin. You can't get out. You can't get out. You can't get in. The, my grandchildren went to Don Benito. On the school hours, you were not allowed to park on the street, therefore the people at least had to move over to the side. Uh, and all these other cars that are parked on the street, you cannot get out. Russell and I talked about it. They, they park all in front of Russell's side. A lot of times he can't even get out of his driveway.
Yeah.
And it's just, no one cares.
We know where it is.
Yeah, I see it here. Um, Dorothy, this is in Melissa and Dorothy's tract. I'll make sure these are your council members, so what will happen is you want, he noted he wants to be notified. I made some notes on it and they'll, they'll take it from there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, George. I've known George now for a long, long time. Junior high.
Went to the same church.
Yeah, so.
I just want to recognize uh Russ, Russell here. He is a community champion also. Uh, amazing keeping so many people safe in the chaos uh of that area, so thank you, Russ.
He's a, the, our traffic guard.
Crossing guard.
Oh, crossing guard. Okay, all right. So that's the end of our public comment. Okay, so now we're going to move on to our census tract reports. Forty-six, ten, that's me. Again, okay, we have a new four-way stop at Windsor and Figaroa. Uh, the uh supervisor was there last week and she made a couple of changes that they made today on that stop site, stop sign. And so um, there's a little bit of a change, but it's still there. And very soon she um pushed forward the stoplight to go in. She put it on fast forward. So there'll be a four-way uh stoplight at Windsor and Figaroa soon. Okay, and also today on the board of supervisors' agenda was Charles White Park. They allowed it the money for the park to be redone, so the park, they should start working on the park pretty soon. So that's my census tract report. Now we have forty-six, twelve.
Hi, that's uh me.
Okay.
I'll try to make this as fast as possible. Uh, we talked about earlier last Thursday night, the head and house for a movie and there was an accident like two minutes right before me, right before he passed at Pepper in New York. And, I mean, we were there before emergency responders. There was a woman moaning in pain and it was just, I don't want to ever experience something like that again, right? And so, you know, it's a difficult area. Counties try to fix it. It's just a mess because the streets don't line up at Pepper in New York and everyone's confused about when to turn. But to see someone actually suffer at nighttime from, from that was really hard for me, especially going to see a movie. It's like, who wants to see a movie when that? Anyhow, so the next day I drove over there, I took a look, you know, during the day because it was nighttime. And a man was out there taking pictures, so I chatted with him and I recognized him. It turns out he was there, he was actually directing traffic when the accident had happened because he was actually one of the four people that was almost hit by the driver. The person that was hit, he knew. She couldn't jump back in time because she was elderly. But all four people would have been hit if they couldn't jump back in time. And it's like, you know, what's going on here? And so I did another recon this, the next night, at the same time it happened. And I took my light meter and it was so, I'm an astronomer, right? It was so dark, I actually tripped over the curb twice, you know, and so that's Pepper and, and New York. And it was really dark and the crosswalks there, it's like, I'm surprised people aren't hit there all the time, right? And so uh, and two days later I got a letter from a resident there and he, he didn't even know the accident had happened. He lived right on the corner. I'm going to read a little bit. Dear uh Dr. Wilkes and Mr. Cauliflower, I'm writing about two issues in pedestrian safety. Mind you, he lives in the corner. He didn't know the accident had happened, but two days later he sends this email. I live on Pepper and I have to walk a few miles on the streets in Altadena every day, almost always in the late afternoon and evening. I'm pleased to see the county has placed a stop sign at Crosswalk at Hallson and Altadena, making it the only controlled pi- uh crossing uh of Altadena Drive between Allen Lake. I cross Altadena at Hallson many evenings and this stop si- stop sign is a big deal. In contrast to the stop signs, I think that the traffic control lines on Hallson increase the danger of walking by unnecessarily constricting the space available to cars. Sidewalks, not lines, are the actual solution. Uh, and the new crosswalks at Mendocino and Allen, previously faraway, will also be helpful. But he also says the trash pickup by UWS is a problem because they're not coming on time and you gotta walk around trash cans. More detail on this, but he saw that as an issue of safety as well because you gotta walk around. There's no sidewalk, right? And so maybe I can actually provide these emails. I thought he was going to come tonight. He said he was, maybe he just couldn't make it. And so he, when I told him an accident happened, he couldn't believe it, so he wrote another email and says, "The corner would be safer if half the streetlights, mostly along the north side of New York, weren't burned out." If I understood correctly, when the ATC discussed it, those are power pole streetlights and belong to SCE. SCE should also replace the standard arm on the streetlight in northeast corner with a twelve-foot arm. And right now the streetlight's buried in an oak tree, so put a twelve-foot one so you don't damage the oak tree, he says. And so, you know, that was his recommendation. And so slow down at intersections even if the law says otherwise, is how I see things. People go too fast there. So basically, you know, I'm an astronomer. I, I love darkness, dark sky, but not when you got pedestrians crossing and you can't even, I tripped over my own feet twice, so something has to be done there. So that's all I want to say and that's all he wanted to say as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. I'd just like to recommend maybe you get with Diane and you guys come up with um something so that you could present it to Public Works to do some kind of recommendation. Diane, Doug, okay?
Yeah, and Sylvia. I mean, it's.
And Sylvia.
It's in both of our census tracts.
Yeah, so you guys can come up with recommendations and Public Works, because right now they are listening.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, exactly. That'd be great.
Okay.
Before we adjourn, and we'll adjourn in a second, I just want to remind the council, the chairs are to remain in place, but please help put away supplies and tables. I motion to adjourn.
Adjourned. All right.